There's so much we want to hear from Dr John Andrews, so why don't we put our hand and welcome him?
Hey, good evening. It is absolutely wonderful to be with you again. It's hard to believe that it's been a week. It's gone past so, so quickly. Well, it may have gone slowly for you, but it feels like it's gone quickly for me. I've been saying to people since I've been here, the clock is moving faster in Singapore than anywhere else, as I've been teaching, but it's been an absolute joy to be here. And thank you again Pastor and team for the wonderful hospitality. So well looked after and feel so honoured and it's just a joy to be with you. And I sort of want to carry on a little bit from the theme last week, but develop it in a slightly different direction. So if you were here last week, then you will know that we leaned into this beautiful letter that Jeremiah wrote to the early waves of the exiles. And he told them to do a number of things. And right at the end, if you were, again, if you're, if you were with us and you sort of managed to retain this, we talked, we asked the question, was he successful? Was the letter successful? And we thought about people like Daniel, we thought about people like Esther and Mordecai, and we thought about people like Nehemiah. They were representative of the success of this policy. That Daniel, that Jeremiah was essentially saying, look, you're gonna be in Babylon for at least 70 years. So you gotta lock down, you gotta plant and build and grow your families and bring the shalom of God to Babylon and, and influence that place for the glory of God. And of course, many of them did. In fact, many of the people who would have heard that letter written to them died in exile. And, and most of the people returning to Israel after the exile, many of them would have been born in exile. So, so we leaned into that idea last week. And what I wanna do is I wanna pick up now a post exile moment. So I'm gonna read in a moment a little passage from the book of Nehemiah. So Nehemiah, here's an interesting thought for you as we're about to read together. Nehemiah would have been born in exile. Okay. So the likelihood is he's born in exile. We know that he rises to a place of real influence. If you read the first chapter of Nehemiah, we find him as the cup bearer to the king. And that meant essentially, I mean, it's a great job and a terrible job. It meant essentially that Nehemiah would ensure that none of the food getting to the king was poisoned. So if, if anything got past Nehemiah, then Nehemiah would be in big trouble. But he had the ear of the king. And in fact, it's because of a relative proximity to the king that he's able to return to Jerusalem with a sort of a support structure in play. The, the king actually put some money on the table and Nehemiah is able to return back to Jerusalem and begin an amazing rebuilding process. So Nehemiah is in many ways a phenomenal success story from Jeremiah. Jeremiah writes, and he says all of these amazing pieces of advice. Nehemiah does just that, ends up getting close, not now to the king of Babylon. When we pick up Nehemiah, chapter one, Nehemiah is close to the king of Persia. Persia took over the Babylonians. And so Nehemiah is now in an amazing position to return and prompted by God, he wants to go back to Jerusalem and rebuild. And, and again, one last little thing before we read the passage. Sometimes we tend to think of the exile in being in one big lump that the Babylonians took all the people in one go, but actually they took them in three stages. And then we tend to think of the return at the end of the exile, one big group going back. But actually, there was a staged return. So by the time we read the book of Nehemiah, people have already returned, but it hasn't been going particularly well for them. And this is where Nehemiah steps in. Is that okay? It's a little bit of background for you. And so last week, if you like, we had an outward focus, a missional focus. Tonight I want to speak to you about rebuilding the walls, as it were. Rebuilding the heart of God for our community, what we believe God has called this place to be and how we can rebuild it together. And Nehemiah represents that beautiful, beautiful idea. So if you've got a Bible, believe it or not, I'm gonna read from the book of Nehemiah. Okay, so if you wanna turn it up and follow with me, I'm gonna read a few verses from Nehemiah, chapter two, and we'll skip in into chapter three as we go. So Nehemiah has now arrived in Jerusalem and we'll pick it up from here. So it says this, verse 11, chapter two. "I went to Jerusalem and after staying there three days, I sat out during the night with a few men. I had not told anyone what my God had put in my heart to do for Jerusalem. There were no mounts with me except the one I was riding on." So God had essentially put in Nehemiah's heart to rebuild the walls. Verse 13. "By night I went out through the valley gate toward the Jekyll well and the dung gate, examining the walls of Jerusalem which had been broken down and its gates which had been destroyed by fire. Then I moved on toward the fountain gate and the king's pool, but there was not enough room for my mount to get through. So I went up the valley by night examining the wall. Finally I turned back and re-entered through the valley gate." Just notice the detail, this is very typical of Nehemiah, he's a detailed person. Verse 16. "The officials did not know where I'd gone or what I was doing because as yet I had said nothing to the Jews or the priests or nobles or officials or any others who would be doing the work. Then I said to them, 'You see the trouble we are in. Jerusalem lies in ruins and its gates have been burnt with fire. Come, let us restore the wall of Jerusalem and we will no longer be in disgrace.' I also told them about the gracious hand of my God upon me and what the king had said to me. They replied, 'Let us start rebuilding.' So they began this good work. But when Samballan the Horenite, Tobiah the Ammonite official and Geshem the Arab heard about it, they mocked and ridiculed us. 'What is this you're doing?' they asked. 'Are you rebelling against the king?' I answered them by saying, 'The God of heaven will give us success. We, his servants, will start rebuilding. But as for you, you have no share in Jerusalem or any claim or historic right to it.'" And then we'll skip into a little bit of chapter three. "Eliashiph the high priest and his fellow priests went to work and rebuilt the sheep gate. They dedicated it and set its doors in place, building as far as the Tower of the Hundred, which they dedicated, and as far as the Tower of Hanane. The men of Jericho built the adjoining section and Zakkor, son of Emri, built next to them." And if you keep reading chapter three, it goes on a little bit like that. I'm gonna leave it there because the names get harder and harder as you go through there and harder to read. Now, if, if you looked at our Old Testament in our Bible and you looked at the Hebrew Bible, the Tanakh, essentially it's the same document, so exactly the same books, exactly the same story, there is no difference whatsoever. What's really interesting however, is the way one is set out as opposed to the other. So if you looked at the, our Old Testament, our Old Testament is sort of in five bits, sort of. Okay, we have the Pentateuch, the first five books of the Bible, Genesis, Exodus, Davidus, Numbers and Deuteronomy. Then we have what we call a history section, which runs from Joshua all the way through to Esther. And then we get a, a poetry section, which runs from Job all the way through to Song of Solomon. You still with me? Great. And then we get the prophets section. Now, our prophets section in our Christian Bible, we sort of think of it in two bits. We think of the prophets as major and minor, exactly. And the major prophets are the ones you would expect, Isaiah, you've got Ezekiel in there, Jeremiah, Lamentations sits in there, and you've even got Daniel in there. And then all the other prophets from Hosea all the way to Malachi are what we call the minor prophets. Are you with me so far? Okay, now, the major, they're only major because they're big. It's not because they're more important. And the minors are only minor because again, they, they tend to be smaller documents and smaller prophecies. Now, when you look at the Hebrew Bible, it's a wee bit different. And this was really an eye-opening experience for me when I did my Hebrew studies. It was a, it was a game-changing thing actually. Because in the Hebrew Bible, this is the way Jesus would have read the Bible. His Hebrew Bible would have sort of been in three bits, a little bit simpler. I like that, as it being a simple soul. And, and the three bits of the Hebrew Bible are, again, the first five books, just like ours, but they would call that the Torah or sometimes referred to in the Gospels as Moses, all right? And then they would have a prophets section. Now again, the prophets bit is very similar to our prophets bit with a couple of big changes. In there you've got the book of Joshua and Judges, and you've got Samuel and Kings, which is a bit of a strange addition into the prophets. Interestingly, someone like Daniel doesn't sit in the prophets and Lamentations doesn't sit in the prophets, okay? So there's a couple of wee interesting changes there. And then in the Hebrew Bible that Jesus would have understood and Paul and Peter, people like that would have been shaped by this, this view. The third section is the writings. And the writings, well, it's sort of everything else that's not included in the Torah and the prophets. And the writings would include things like the Psalms, Proverbs, those beautiful poetry sections and also sections in there, books in there that we may not expect to be in there. So, so you've got like Daniel sitting in there, you've got Ruth sitting in there. So it's a little bit different. Now, why, why am I saying all of that? Because what's really weird is in the Hebrew Bible, the same amount of books are in the Hebrew Bible as the Christian Bible. So there's 39 books in our, in our Old Testament, right? In the Hebrew Bible however, there are 24. What? Okay, and they count them differently. Now, I'm getting somewhere, stay with me. It is a Bible study after all. So, so I, I am getting somewhere. So, so the reason for the difference is some major changes. So we count, for example, first and second Samuel as two books. They count that as one, they just call it Samuel, right? We count first and second Kings as two books, it's one. First and second Chronicles is one. The, the big change is when you come to the minor prophets, there, there, anyone know how many minor prophets there are? 12, always a good guess, three or 12. It's always gotta be three or 12 or maybe 40, right? So, so there are the big numbers that keep popping up. So there are 12 minor prophets. In the Hebrew Bible, they're counted as one. John, what on earth? What's the point? The point is this, that one of the big changes which often Christians miss and make a terrible mistake on, is that in the Hebrew Bible Ezra and Nehemiah are one book. Now, I will put my mortgage on it, if I was a betting man, which I'm not, which I'm not. Saw some of you looking at me, really weird there, okay? I, I would put my mortgage on it that every time you have heard the book of Nehemiah taught, it has not been in reference to Ezra. Okay, mostly what we do is, and why not? Because it's an amazing book, we jump straight into Nehemiah, the rebuilding of the walls bit. But in the Hebrew Bible, and this is, this has changed the way I read this particular book. In the Hebrew Bible Ezra and Nehemiah are together. Now, why is that important? Remember I told you right at the beginning in the introduction that these exiles returned in waves? So Ezra represents an early return to some of those exiles. Nehemiah represents a slightly later return. Are, are you with me so far? Now, if you read Ezra before you read Nehemiah, here's what you discover. There are three big leaders represented in the story of Ezra and Nehemiah. The first leader we meet is a man called Zurubbal. What a great name, Zurubbal. Try saying that with a mouthful of rice, Zurubbal. Okay, so, so you've got Zurubbal. Now, what does Zurubbal do? Zurubbal leads the charge in rebuilding the temple. Then the second leader to come along is a man called Ezra. The book's named after him. Ezra is really important because Ezra restores the Torah. Then the third leader to come along is Nehemiah, who builds the walls. Now note this, this is so, so important. I think it's a, it's a word for this church. I think it's a word for us at this moment in our journey here at B C and it's so, so important that before we think about rebuilding walls, we must restore worship and word. Temple, Torah, walls. Do you see that? Now, this is so, so important. The church is not a structure. Come on now, church is not an organisation. The church is not a business, though all of those things we might need to think about in building a local church. But we are primarily a supernatural community built around a supernatural faith. That actually, our focus is not the walls, our focus is worship. Our focus is word and then out of those two things, we build some walls. The walls become something more important than they are. The walls should be an expression of something, not, not the focus of something. So, so actually, when we think about Nehemiah, you have to think about Nehemiah in the context of the worship of God being restored in the temple and the word of God. And in fact, if you go all the way to the end of book of, the book of Nehemiah, it's a bit of a sticky finish. It's not very satisfactory because the people are struggling again. Why? Not because the walls aren't built, but because they've forgotten worship and Torah. The walls are now built at the end of Nehemiah. What's happened? They've lost their way again in terms of their focus on God and their obedience to the word of God, which is a sort of a constant challenge in that community as they go forward. Does that make sense to you? And I would challenge you, especially if you're a leader in this room, if you've never read Nehemiah with Ezra, you need to do that. Just, just take that on as a challenge and here's the pattern you'll see. Zurubbal restores worship. Ezra restores Torah, as it were, as it were, and then Nehemiah brings walls. It's, it's that trajectory. And, and when the church focuses on walls, we start focusing on the wrong thing. When, when we put our energy into worship and word, the walls hopefully will find a natural expression. It makes sense to build the walls because we've got a house of worship and a house of word. Come on, are you with me? Now, I know this church is literally, you're in a bit of a refurb, aren't you? You're, you're, you're doing the, the building up. You've had a bit of a miracle with the lease, isn't that right? Incredible miracle, my goodness. If in the UK we had to like raise millions of pounds just to lease our land, I'm not sure what we would do. You guys are amazing, having to raise money just to lease the land you are sitting on. It's absolutely staggering and a 30-year lease at that, you know? Would it be nice to have 50 or 100 years? That would have been great, but actually 30 is, it's an incredible challenge. And, and you've had a miracle with the lease, but I know because of the journey you've on. So this is not me speaking prophetically, I know this. I know that you're in a sort of a, a, a refocusing period, a rebuilding period. Quite literally, you are refurbishing this beautiful building. When I came to the lights just across the road and looked at this building, absolutely gorgeous building, it is beautiful and right on the corner. I mean, it's prime, it's a prime position. And so it's right that we are refurbishing. But of course, it's not just a physical rebuild that you're involved in. There's also something of the rebuilding of your vision, the rebuilding of your heart, the rebuilding of your values, the, the rebuilding of the things that God is saying among us. And that's ultimately gotta be the primary thing that we are rebuilding together. Absolutely, we've gotta build the walls, but, but actually the walls are to house the temple and the walls are to express the Torah. So if, if we can lean into that, that is incredibly powerful. So let's get back to Nehemiah because I, I do wanna lean in a little bit, but I didn't wanna say what I want to say about Nehemiah without saying that first because there's a context to Nehemiah's journey which is so, so important. Now, the book of Nehemiah represents a miraculous, almost miraculous turnaround. A wall that has been broken down for at this stage over 70 years gets rebuilt in 52 days. You're a hard crowd to impress. I thought, I thought that was pretty good, even by biblical standards. To rebuild a wall that has been broken down, depending how you count your generations, for at least two, possibly three, depending how you count, three or two generations. It's been in ruins and Nehemiah comes back and manages to energise a group of people so incredibly that that group of people rebuild the walls in a month and a half. Somebody say wow. All right, you know, I, I, I've, I've done, I've done DIY in my house that has taken longer than a month and a half, right? That's incredible. And anybody who has ever built anything knows, wow. And I look at that and as a leader, I'm going as a shepherd, as someone committed to a local Christian community, just like yours, and go, wow, how on earth did he do that? How on earth did Nehemiah turn a group of people round who were getting used to life without a wall, even though they needed one in the ancient world? If you didn't have a wall in the ancient world, you were in big trouble. You were open to all sorts of attack and all sorts of abuse. That one of the first things you would do in an ancient city is build a wall as quickly as possible. So for this wall to be broken down and yet for Nehemiah to rebuild it, or at least get others to rebuild it, there's not actually a, a single verse saying that Nehemiah built the wall, even though he gets all the credit, but he motivates people to build the wall. Now, I, I'm looking at that and thinking, wow, how on earth did he do this? And, and I wanna, I wanna suggest to you one big idea with three practical outworkings tonight. Is that okay? It might help us, it certainly helps me. And it's this, the big idea is this, ownership. When you read Nehemiah, chapter one, even though Nehemiah is thousands of miles away in Persia, he thinks, prays and weeps like an owner. Now, here's the irony, now watch this. Nehemiah has never been to Jerusalem. And yet if you read chapter one, he's weeping, fasting, burdened as if he was living there. We're introduced to a man whose heart is the heart of an owner. Do you understand what I mean by that? Here's, here's what I believe, ownership changes everything. The reason Nehemiah goes from Persia to Jerusalem is because something in his heart said, this city is mine. Amen. Come on, are you with me? This city's mine. Now, listen, Nehemiah had never been to Jerusalem and Nehemiah had a great job in Persia and Nehemiah could have stayed there and lived happily ever after. Why on earth does he leave and travel all the way back? Put himself in danger, put himself under pressure to do this? Because there's something in his heart that is an owner of this wonderful city. This city that is the spiritual epicentre of his people. He's an owner. When, when Dawn and I, my wife and I planted our first little church, we pioneered a church. And we pioneered this church in a little village in the north of England, which was historically a coal mining village. So most of the people living there had their jobs related to directly or indirectly to the coal mining industry, which at that time in the UK was still pretty huge. It's virtually decimated now. We hardly dig any coal out of the ground. We're getting it from everywhere but from the UK. And it's, it's an amazing, amazing thing. So most of the people living in that little village, there was about 2,000, 2,500 dwellings in this village, not far from a big town. And the church in the big town wanted to plant a church into this village. And I was a child, really, 20 years of age I was, coming out of Bible college, no experience, just three years training in Bible college, which did not equip me at all for pioneering a church with the practicalities that I had to do. But we felt the call of God and we went into this little village under the care of this wonderful mother church and it was a great, great experience. We had a wonderful time. We started with 13 people and on the first day, one left. So I grew the church by minus one by the end of the day. That was a bit of a, bit of a trait in my experience. And, and so we ended up with 12 people and we just started building together and the Lord was so, so... I look back now and I think, how did those poor people survive me? I don't know. I mean, I'm 57 now and I'm pretty manic. Can you imagine what I was like at 20? Completely unbearable probably. So, so there we are. But, but we started to build together and by God's amazing grace Pastor, my wife and I, we had no money, like literally no money. I came straight out of Bible college, I was hardly earning anything. The mother church were paying me a little bit, but it was just, just about paying the bills. Had a little rented flat in the, in the village. And my wife was finishing Bible college, so she did another year while I was pioneering in the first year. She left Bible college, she had 1,400 pounds in her bank account because someone had blessed her to pay off her college fees. And I'm thinking, marvelous, 1,400 pound for our wedding and my wife gave it all away. She gave it all away, amazing. And I thought, I wanna marry her, she's an amazing woman. I, I wanna, any woman will give all that money, I wanna marry someone like that. And so we literally started our married life with virtually nothing. I'm not exaggerating, but the Lord took care of us. We always had enough, we had bread every day, we were able to pay the bills and it was the most amazing adventure. And somehow, by God's grace, we managed to buy our first little house, right? And the economy in the United Kingdom had collapsed. There was just a breakdown in the economy. As a result, housing stock just plummeted. So it was a great time to buy, a terrible time to sell. You gotta hold your nerve if you own your own property when the, when the market crashes. And it just, it was amazing and we ended up benefiting by being able to buy a house. But here was the thing I noticed. Most of the inhabitants of that village rented. They didn't own. So many of them rented their house from the coal board that they worked for or they rented their house from the local government stock. So of the village, 95% of the houses were rented, okay? Which, which, that's okay, not a problem at all. But then an amazing thing happened. The government suddenly changed its policy. A, a prime minister called Margaret Thatcher went on this huge drive to help people own their own homes. And suddenly she did a deal with the coal board, she did a deal with local government and all of this rented housing stock came onto the market relatively cheap. So people could buy their own home who never, ever could have believed they could buy their own home. And, and something amazing happened. Our village started to change. Now, I'd love to tell you it started to change because of prayer and fasting from the young pioneer pastor in the church or, or because we were experiencing revival. But no, the thing that started to change our village was people went from a renter paying into something that somebody else owned to owners. The house was now theirs. Now, I hope I don't defend anybody with this, but, but most of the renters... most of the renters in our community were doing just enough. They would pay their rent and expect the landlord to do the rest. Is that, is that okay? So I, I know there are some people in this room even, maybe you're renting your property, and you are a wonderful tenant because you treat that apartment like you own it. And that, and you are a landlord's dream, right? If that can happen. But without being unkind, most of the people renting were doing just enough. And as a result of that, gardens were unkempt and repairs weren't done properly. And because the government stopped, because they were taking a long time to fix stuff, the place looked a bit rundown. And then people started owning their homes, and something miraculous happened. Gardens were tidied up, rubbish was removed, windows were replaced, doors were painted, roofs were fixed, hedges were pruned, trees were cut. It was like a literal transformation in front of my eyes. And, and I, and I would love to tell you, it was the Holy Spirit supernaturally sort of moving across the village. And, and, and maybe the Holy Spirit was part of that, but here's what it was. It was people became owners. And, and renters do, forgive me if this is not you, forgive me now, renters do enough. Whereas an owner will do what has to be done. Are you with me? If you know, right, I'm handing this house back to a landlord eventually, or he could kick me out any minute, you do just enough. But when that piece of land, apartment or whatever, you own suddenly, whoa, game-changing moment. It's a game-changing moment. Now, here's what I've discovered, brothers and sisters, please don't be offended. And the fact that you're here on a Wednesday night means you're probably in the owner category. But let me just say this. In the Church of Jesus Christ, I've discovered three types of people. Now, this is, this could sound harsh, and I don't want it to be. There is what sometimes I refer to, forgive this language, as a squatter. Do you understand the language of squatter? So a squatter in the UK is someone who moves into a property that's not theirs and essentially squats in it, takes it, and unusually, usually, they sort of destroy it. They rip all the value out of that. It's, it's a homeowner's worst nightmare. A squatter moves into your house. They even, in the UK, they have squatters' rights. You can't actually remove them unless you go to court and legally, isn't that an amazing idea? Someone could move into your house, and you can't get them out. It's an amazing thought. Right? So, so here's what I've discovered. There are squatters who move in and take. There are renters that do just enough. And then there are owners who do what it takes. Now, I've seen that in life, forgive me for the oversimplification, but I've also seen it in the church. So my thirty-seven years of Christian experience in the Church of Jesus Christ, I've seen squatters who turn up and take. You give, they take. Pastor gives, they take. B C gives, they take. Now, listen, the, the kingdom of God is about being generous, so don't hear what I'm not saying. But I'm not talking about our giving, I'm talking about their mentality of taking. Are you with me? So, so i- if, if a squatter is part of B C, there, there's no thought, what can I contribute to B C? The only thought is, what can I get out of this? It's a consumer mindset. Okay? Now, that might not be happening in Singapore, but it's happening in the UK, right? And then you get the renter. Now, the renter's better than the squatter mentality, but the renter, the mentality is this, I, I will do just as much as I need to do to stay part of this thing. But don't ask me to do anymore. All right? So the, 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 forgive this extreme, but the, the renter's the person on, on the hosting team, and, okay, it's ten thirty, time's up, I'm going. All right? So, so they do what they have to do. Thank God for that. That's better than nothing. But, but they do only enough. Now, the owner, however, goes, no, this is, this is my house. This is my home. These are my people. And the owner will do whatever it takes. Now, if, if B C is not just gonna reverb offices and floors and, and, and modernize the building, which I know is the, is all that plans you're on with, but if also we wanna rebuild the heart of B C, here's the thing. We need an ownership mentality amongst leaders and followers to make that happen. And that can't be demanded of you. That, that's suddenly only you give. Pastor can't twist your arm up your back and make you an owner. An owner is someone who goes, an, an owner is Nehemiah, thousands of miles away, who's never been to Jerusalem going, I need to do something. That's an owner. Are, are you with me? And here's what I've discovered. Ownership changes everything. And owners change things. Let me say that again. Ownership changes everything. When you become an owner, whatever you're owning, it changes. Whether it's your job, your family, your marriage, yourself, your church, your nation. When you become an owner of any of those things, you can't look at them the same again. Change. All right? So ownership changes everything, but secondly, owners change things. Things don't change unless someone says, with the right, the, the right mentality, someone says, this is mine. I don't mean possessively mine. I mean, this is mine. I'm part of this. I want this to succeed. Does that make sense to you? Hope you're not offended by the language, but, but I think that's what Nehemiah manages to do. I think Nehemiah manages with a relatively small group of people to create an ownership culture. But the reason he's able to do that is because he himself is an owner. He's come thousands of miles, and he's saying, if no one else is prepared to put the bricks in the wall, I am. Who's with me? Because he literally says that. You can see the state we're in. Come, let us rebuild the walls. He makes an appeal, and he's making an appeal to the leadership of, of the people. He said, come on, come and help me rebuild these walls. But what he's relying on is, is ownership. Does that make sense? All right. Out of that three practical ideas, I hope, I hope it will encourage you as you're rebuilding together, as you're moving forward together. But when we look at Nehemiah, and especially chapter three of Nehemiah, I'm gonna use that as a little bit of a platform to spring off on. When you look at Nehemiah and the detail that Nehemiah gives us, there are three very simple but amazing ideas that I think are worthy of your consideration as you as a community are rebuilding together. Here's the first idea. Nehemiah teaches us, it's not about how many, it's about how well. All right? It's not about how many, it is about how well. Now, because Nehemiah is a detailed person, he gives us a lot of really cool detail. And some people in the room will love Nehemiah for that, and others, you know, will just sort of slip into a Bible coma as we read the Book of Nehemiah, because it's just too much detail. But the detail is really important. If you were to read chapter three of Nehemiah, for example, Nehemiah lists thirty-seven individuals, or thirty-seven individual people named in Nehemiah, chapter three. Not only does he name thirty-seven individuals, but he names twelve groups of people. So language like the residence of Zidoa, Levites, priests, temple servants. So he, he moves from naming individuals to groups of people that are helping with the project. And then to tie it all together, he does something amazing. In my English Bible, my NIV Bible, he uses phrases like after or beyond him or beyond them. He uses that phrase fifteen times in chapter three. And then he uses the phrase next to him or next to them fifteen times. All right? Now, I know it's late on a Wednesday night, but stay with me. So we've got thirty-seven individuals, twelve groups of people, no idea how big or how small those groups are. And they're all connected together with thirty connecting statements. In other words, Nehemiah is showing us that however many people got on the wall to rebuild, they are connected. Next to, next to, next to, next to, next to. In fact, when you read Nehemiah, chapter three, it feels like they're sort of like interconnected. It's almost like there's this beautiful synergy on the wall. And so, so we get this sense of whoever is getting on the wall, somehow, in a very short space of time, Nehemiah has managed to find a connecting idea that's pulling them together. He's pulled together, if you like, some owners. Now, here's what's really, really interesting. Because he's a detailed person, he also gives us numbers of how many people returned in that wave of exiles. So let me give them to, in chapter seven, it tells us that forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two people returned in that wave. Now, that's a really believable number. He didn't say fifty thousand or sixty thousand. He didn't round it up. He tells us forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two. I like that. See, I, I'm, I'm a bit of a detailed person, and I like the idea. He doesn't just go, yeah, approximately fifty thousand returned. No, he tells us exactly forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two. In fact, he even tells us how many animals returned in that wave, eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six. What? Now, why, why, why are those numbers important? Because, because Nehemiah is giving us detail, which is important for us. And, and he's teaching us something that's really easy to miss in the story, but it's really powerful. He's teaching us that actually, although there are groups of people and individuals on the wall rebuilding, not all forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two were helping. Of the forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two that returned, a fraction are rebuilding the wall. Are you with me? Now, this is really, really important for us because sometimes we feel that unless everybody's building, we're not succeeding. And this was, this was a life-changing lesson for me as a young pastor that, that the Holy Spirit really helped me with this idea. And here's what he said to me. He said, John, start building with those who want to build. Right? Don't exclude those who don't want to build. Don't close the door. But if you wait till everybody's signed up, we're gonna be waiting for forever. Right? Had Nehemiah waited till every one of the forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two people said, yeah, I, I'll give you a Tuesday afternoon to rebuild the wall, then the wall wouldn't have been built. Well, it wouldn't have been built in fifty-two days. It gets rebuilt because Nehemiah makes an appeal for ownership, and the owners step up. And the owners go, I'll help you. And, 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 and he pulls the owners together, and he starts building, and they get moving. Now, there may have been others who joined them as they built. There may have been people who stopped building. We're not giving that detail. But here's the thing we are given, that he doesn't wait for everybody to sign up. He just starts building. And, and this is an important idea. Now, we're gonna watch this. We don't wanna be, we don't wanna exclude people. We don't want to make people feel like second-class citizens. But here's the thing, when it comes to rebuilding the walls and rebuilding the heart of the church, if we wait until everyone agrees, we're not gonna do it. We make an appeal to, here's what the Lord has said, this is where we believe we're supposed to be going. These are the walls we believe we're supposed to be building. Who's with me? Come on. Now, we need to sell that property. We need to speak about that property. We need to give everybody as much chance as possible to respond. But there comes a point where we go, right, we've just gotta start. Let's, let's go. Let's do this. Let's get on and build it. A few years ago, there was a very, very heavy snowfall in our community. I know you don't suffer from snow here. Snow looks great in the movies, and it looks great on a postcard. Trust me, it's a pain in the bum. It's, it's, snow's awful. It's great if you don't have anything to do, and you can stay in all day drinking hot chocolate and watching Christmas movies, right? But if you've got a life and you've got stuff to do, snow is a pain, right? Because it just stops everything. It makes life really difficult. And if you get wet in the snow, it's horrible. It's just horrible. Okay? If you want the snow experience, just open your freezer and sit in it for half an hour. That, that'll cure you immediately from this desire to see snow. So it's, so it's an amazing, at one level, amazing experience, but also a pain. And we had a really heavy snow dump in two thousand and nineteen. Now, where we lived at that time, we were on a very, very steep hill. And the hill led up, up the way, and then it was a T, a T junction. So if you looked at it from the sky, it was like you were looking at a T-shaped community, right? And we had houses all along the top of the T, and then sort of on the stem of the T. Probably about fifty dwellings in the T. But the problem was, we all lived on a steep hill. And with this snow dump, the problem was, we needed to get the snow cleared as quickly as possible. The government wouldn't come and do it. We, we were a private housing estate, so we had to go out and do it ourselves. And we even had, like, big bins of sand that, that the government very kindly left for us to spread ourselves. So that was, that was helpful. So my wife and I, looking at the snow dump, thought, we gotta go out and do something. Some neighbors, two doors up, they also thought the same idea, and we sort of came out together, which was really amazing. And four of us are thinking, wow, this'll be great. Wouldn't it be great if all of our neighbors join in, and we all have this sort of party clearing the snow? And, and what I would love to tell you happened was this. As we started clearing the snow, everybody looking out their window thought, we should join John and Dawn. We, we should join those people out there. Let's all put on our, our clothes. Let's turn the television off and stop watching Christmas movies and stop drinking hot chocolate, and let's go out and help them clear the snow. Now, fifty dwellings in the T, fifty, five zero, not one person came out. Not one. Right? It was me, my wife, and two neighbors. Nobody else joined us. Incredible. And we decided, hey, Luke, well, we still live here. We need to clean this snow. And it's not just we're cleaning it for us. We need to clean it for our neighbors. And we started clearing the snow. It took us five hours to clear the snow so that you could get one car down the path. So one car, we just drove down the middle of the road, up and down, until the snow melted. And we cleared that. I mean, we were sweating. We were exhausted by the end of it. And here's what I'd love to tell you happened. At the end of it, all of our neighbors came out to their doors and started applauding us and saying, wow, you're heroes. You're amazing. We love you. Here's some marshmallows. Here's some hot chocolate. Here's that Christmas movie you missed while you were out clearing the snow for the last five hours. Not one neighbor thanked us. What's wrong with these people? Absolutely crazy. Right? But here's the point, ladies and gentlemen, if we had have waited for them, the snow's not getting cleared. So somebody needed to do it. And that's ownership, right? I, I wasn't the only peo- person that lived on the street. Dawn and I were the only people living there. But we, there was only four people that behaved like owners that day. And everybody got the benefit, even though we were the ones that actually did the work. And, and church life can be a wee bit like that. And sometimes we're under pressure to make, to sort of make sure everybody comes, and everybody gets involved, and everybody does. And I love that. And if we can make that happen, that's brilliant. But my experience is, is if I'm waiting for everybody, or if I'm waiting for seventy-five percent, or if I'm waiting for sixty percent to step over the line, generally speaking, it's not going to happen. Here's, here's what we generally end up doing. It's maybe ten, twenty, thirty percent if we're really, really blessed. Maybe forty percent of revival happens and we go, okay, come on, let's start clearing the snow now. Yes? Because we're owners. And, and we're not waiting for someone else to step up. We are stepping up. Does that make sense to you? And I think this is a crucial idea for us to think about. Nehemiah is not trying to get everybody to step up. Nehemiah is appealing for owners to step up. He's saying, anyone see what I see? Anyone disturbed that the walls are broken down? Anyone annoyed that we've been living like this for two generations? And anyone with me? And people go, oh, yeah, me. And, and they step up. Uh, and they step in. And they step on. And enough people became owners of the project so that the wall was rebuilt in a month and a half. But, but don't read Nehemiah with rose-coloured spectacles. Not everybody got on the wall. But those who did worked together. It's not about how many. It's about how well. Yes? Come on, are you with me? All right, here's the second idea really quickly. I'm watching the clock. It really does go faster in Singapore. Or maybe I just talk too much. Okay, here's the second, the second idea. It's not just for us, but it's for others. Now Nehemiah examples this. Nehemiah has never been to Jerusalem. This is the, when we, when we see Nehemiah reaching Jerusalem, it's his first time. But if you listen to him, you would think like he's native-born Jerusalem. Right? So he models this idea, but look at his language throughout chapter three. In chapter three, he talks about the men of Decoia, the men of Jericho, the people of Gibeon and Mespa. He talks about those in chapter seven who returned home, that is, not living in Jerusalem. And they returned home. And you get this beautiful picture that actually there's a whole stack of people building the wall of Jerusalem who don't actually live there. They live somewhere else. But they've heard the call, just like Nehemiah heard the call in Persia. They've heard the call, even though they live in Decoia and Mespa and Gibeon and Jericho. They've heard the call. And here's an amazing thought. They're on the wall, building a wall in a place they don't live. But a place they own. Come on now. It's an amazing thought. They're not, they're not just building for themselves. If they were building for themselves, they would be back home, home. But actually, these people are on the wall, building for somebody else. Other people's real estate value will go up because of their building. You know, if you rebuild the wall of Jerusalem, your house in Jericho's not gone up in real estate, but Jerusalem will. I mean, other people are literally going to benefit because of these people's behaviour and their actions. Uh, and this is this, this wonderful mentality that I'm not just building this for me, I'm building this for other people. I'm thinking of other people who are either going to immediately benefit or eventually benefit. So we're building for people who cannot build for themselves, literally cannot. They cannot get on the wall. Right? They cannot physically or literally help. And we're also building for people, can I say, who won't build. I'm not building. Now, if you read Nehemiah really, really carefully, you'll discover that actually, um, let me read this in verse five of chapter three. The next section was repaired by the men of Decoia. Now, listen to this. But their nobles would not put their shoulders to the work other than supervisors. So the men are building, but the nobles of Decoia, nah. I'm not building. I'm not building somebody else's wall. No, I'm not building it. So there we have in verse five of chapter three, this split. You've got, some people go, I'm an owner, I'll build. And you've got other people going, nah. I'm not building. Why should I build someone else's wall? And that's an owner mentality. An owner will build for those who can't. And an owner will build for those who won't. That's what sets the owner apart. The owner is a breed apart. Why? Because they're not just doing it for themselves, even though ultimately they will benefit. But they're doing it for people who can't build for one reason or another. And they're doing it for people who won't build. Now, if that, if that isn't bad enough, let, let, let me just show you this one last little thing in this context, then I'll move on and draw this to a conclusion. But if you, if you look in chapter seven of Nehemiah, if you follow the trajectory of the story, eventually the wall gets completed in chapter six. Now, you would imagine with the wall completed, everybody would be going, come on. This is amazing. Celebration party. And Nehemiah in chapter seven asks for an offering. Right? Now, you would imagine after rebuilding the wall, this is gonna be a winner. I mean, there's no, you don't even need to have some sort of offering speech. You just have to go, da na, look at the walls. Come on, people. Come on. Look at what we've achieved. Uh, why don't you contribute and invest into the future of Jerusalem? But here's what it says. It's absolutely incredible. If you look at chapter seven of Nehemiah, it says that some of the heads of the families contributed. So in chapter three, we've got some of the nobles going, nah, oh no, I'm not building. And then when the wall's finished and Nehemiah's asking for a bit of a financial contribution, some of the heads of families are still going, nah, oh no, you're not getting my money. I'm not contributing, even though the jolly wall's already built. It's amazing. Look, I, can I just say this? There, there are some people can never be one. They just don't want to be one. No matter what you do, no matter what programmes you put on, no matter how hard you work, no matter how amazing things, there's always gonna be someone going, nah, 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 not me. And you mustn't be put off by them. You're always gonna have people going, I, I'm not, I'm not picking up bricks. No. Well, here's, well, here's your response to that. Not, don't shout at them. Don't get distracted by them. You pick up the brick. You build the wall. But people, no, I'm not contributing. You contribute. I've made a decision in my life. I'm not going to allow the non-builders and the non-contributors to determine my building and my contribution. If I'm an owner, I'm gonna build and I'm gonna give. I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna invest into this, regardless of what you decide to do. Regardless of what my neighbour does or doesn't wanna do, I'm gonna do it. Why? Because I believe in it. I want it to work. I want it to go. And, and so I, 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 in my early ministry, I used to get terribly distracted, terribly distracted by the people who weren't building. And I get really angry with them and annoyed at them. And then I would preach at all the good people because I was angry with all the non-building people. And the good people go, Pastor, we're here, we're building. Stop shouting at us. Right? And I would take my anger and frustration at the non-builders out on the builders. How stupid was that? And then I would get annoyed at people not contributing. What is wrong with you? Why don't you just see this? And then it was like the Holy Spirit set me free, like set me free completely. And he said to me, John, you've gotta take your eyes off the people who can't and take your eyes off the people who won't and just get on with it. Just do it. Just serve, give, build. Put your brick in the wall. Put your offering, literally or metaphorically, into the thing. You keep doing it because you believe in it. That makes sense? They took an offering that, that period, and the offering was quite amazing. They took an offering of a hundred and seventy eight point five kilos of gold. That's, if you read it in the Bible language, it's hard to work that out. But trust me, that, that's the sort of modern conversion. And they took an offering of two point three metric tonnes of silver. And not everybody gave. Now, I, I went on the gold standard and silver standard in Singapore today to work out the equivalent of that. Okay? So a hundred and seventy eight point five kilos of gold in Singapore money is twenty point four million dollars. That's worth a while. Okay, thank you, three of you. Clearly you're thinking of your supper, so you need to go. So here we go. The silver, the silver, two point three metric tonnes of silver was two point eight million dollars. Thank you. That's a total of twenty three point two five million dollars in today's money. Now, I know that's all a bit ropey, but as a broad idea, I'm thinking, wow. Twenty three point two million dollars and not everybody gave. Right? Wow. Yeah. Imagine if everybody had a given. But that's the point. Nehemiah wants you to know that. We raised twenty three point two million dollars from owners. From the owners, right? It's the owner that went, I'll give. Well, your nobles aren't go, I, I just matter. Your, the heads of your family, I, I'm giving because I believe in this thing. Now, uh, don't, don't hear me talking about money there. I'm just using it because that's the example. When I talk about giving, I'm talking about all forms of your ownership contribution, which might involve your money. But the point is this, that, that the owner goes, the owner goes, right, look, if you don't wanna give, that's fine, but I'm giving. If you don't wanna contribute, I'm gonna contribute. If you don't wanna step up, I'm gonna step up. If you don't wanna pick up a brick, I'm picking up a brick. That's an owner mentality. Are, are you with me? Does that make sense to you? And I love that. Here's, here's the last wee idea and finish. Couple more minutes, is that okay, Pastor? And then we're done. Honestly, I'll do this really, really quick. The last little thing that Nehemiah demonstrates is not only for today, but for tomorrow. See, Nehemiah, I think, understood something, and this is what set Nehemiah apart. Nehemiah understood the importance of Jerusalem to the Jewish world. He understood that what we build today is not just for us today, but it's for the future. Now, here's an amazing, an amazing thought. Hundreds of years later, Jesus would ride into Jerusalem and look at the walls that Nehemiah built. Just think about that. Jesus and his generation got to enjoy something that Nehemiah and their generation built. I, 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 that blows my brains out, right? That sort of vision. We live in a world today, and it's all about, nah, here, me, instant. If there's not instant satisfaction, instant return, even in spiritual terms, and in the church, we're out, we're done. We're fed up. God's let me down. God's a disappointment. I prayed and I didn't get anything. I invested and this didn't happen. Ladies and gentlemen, that's such a, a level of short-termism that the Bible doesn't recognise. The Bible is committed to a long-term philosophy, a long-term view. Yes, does the Lord wanna bless me today? Of course he does. Does he, does he wanna bless this man on his birthday? Of course he does. Absolutely. He, he wants to bless me and you today. But what he wants to invest in in our community is a longer-term mentality. You, you've just renewed or about to renew your lease for thirty years. There may be people in this room right now that won't see the next renewal of that lease if Jesus doesn't return. Right? But what you're doing today in renewing that lease, in reverbing this building, in rebuilding the heart of this church, what you're doing, it means in thirty years' time, if Jesus doesn't return, somebody is going to benefit from your investment today. Now, you may not get the full benefit. I may not get the full benefit, but somebody is going to get the full benefit. My granddaughter, Abigail, is four and a half. My grandson, Freddie, is a year. The minute they were born, we opened an investment account for them. They won't be able to touch that investment account till they're eighteen years of age. I'm putting money, my wife is putting money into those accounts, their parents are matching it. But we're putting money into an account every single week. I may not even see Abigail open that account. But imagine this thought, if I'm not around for whatever reason, she's gonna open an account and think, thank God for granda. Thank God for nana. Do what the Bible says, a wise man, a wise woman, a wise person leaves an inheritance for their children's children. Can I say this? And I don't wish to be critical. My grandparents left me nothing. Until my, my grandfather got saved, he was a drunk. He drank his money. Poured it down, literally poured it down the toilet. Now, thank God he got saved and he made radical changes of his life. But if my great-grandfather and my grandfather had have thought of their grandchildren or their great-grandchildren, our lives may have looked dramatically different. Now, in our twenty-first century, instant Instagram, TikTok world, we can't wait that long. If I don't get it back now, I'm, I'm not in. But ladies and gentlemen, listen, if we wanna be true owners, we've gotta understand it. Yes, the Lord wants to do something for you right now. Absolutely, one hundred percent. I believe that with all my heart, with all my heart. But he wants to do something bigger in us. He wants to do something bigger in me, where I'm investing into today, knowing that I am not going to get the benefit of that investment. But somebody will. Somebody will. I took a walk today in East, East Coast Road in Catan. Toasting hot. Toast. Only mad dogs and Englishmen go out in the noonday sun. It was toasting hot and I forgot my hat. Right? How silly. Silly person, silly British person. And, and I'm walking along, and you know what? I couldn't wait. As you walk along the path, there's whole sections of the path that are exposed to the sun, and then you can see the shade. We were talking about this today. And you can see the shade and you're literally, let's get to the shade. And here's the thing, I'm enjoying the shade of a tree planted fifty years ago. Planted thirty years ago, planted twenty years ago. The person who planted that may not even be alive. And here I am, thank God. Somebody planted that tree. Come on now. And one day, somebody's going to say, thank God. B.C. did that. Thank God, somebody did that. Last little story as a close. A few years ago, I got to minister in Slovakia. Slovakia is in Central Europe, bang, centre Europe, right? Used to be part of Czechoslovakia. Some of you are old enough to remember that and of a certain age. If you've never heard of Czechoslovakia, it means you're really young and you need to go to Google to check that out. Okay? So, uh, so, uh, right in the heart of Europe. And I was out, I was out there teaching young pastors. We were doing a training program. It was amazing. It was an incredible experience. Former communist countries just being released by the power of God. It was just amazing. And I had an afternoon off. And I decided, we were right in the middle of the countryside, like a semi-little town. And I decided, I'll have a walk around the town, just to see what it's like. And I remember walking around the town, beautiful houses, like big, what we would call bungalows. Beautiful, beautiful one-story homes and absolutely some beautiful two-story homes, really beautiful, with lovely gardens and loads of space and all of that. And I'm walking down the street and, and I saw one house, which was beautiful to look at. And I stopped to look at the house. It was really attractive. And I noticed a date on the wall of the house, the date the house was built. And I just stood there, looking at this, took a picture. And the house was built in nineteen forty two. Now, people of a certain age will go, and? Okay, but some of us in the room will suddenly understand what that means. In nineteen forty two, Europe and the world was involved in one of the bloodiest global conflicts in history. In the Second World War, a hundred million people plus died. But you say that quickly, it's not very many, is it? A hundred million people. As, at, at that As, at, at that very time, Nazi Germany were rolling over Europe and pushing towards Russia. And, and everywhere they went, there was a bloodletting of, of mind numbing proportions. Jewish people were literally being exterminated by the lorry load. And in nineteen forty two, in the middle of all of that, somebody built a house. Come on, somebody built a house. And I'm going, wow. I mean, I, I'd want to emigrate to Mars in nineteen forty two if we could. And yet somebody in the middle of the bloodshed and the madness and the craziness, and it looks like the world is coming to an end, somebody thought, this world will end one day. The madness will be over one day. One day we'll survive this, we, we'll need houses. And it reminded me of Jeremiah, it reminded me of Nehemiah, and, and they built a house. And, and here, here I am, uh, twenty first century, admiring a house built in one of the worst moments of human history. When Nazi Germany was sucking the world of its life, somebody somewhere thought of the future. You're here today because somebody thought of the future. We're here today literally because Jesus thought of the future. We're here today because relatives, friends, family, grandmothers, great grandmothers, great great grandmothers, put their tears and their investment and their prayers and their energy and their ownership into the ground. And because of that, we are here. But having just arrived, a generation before us bled sweat and tears for this beautiful building. Come on now, we're sitting in a gorgeous, this isn't even your main room. This is your little smaller room. Churches would give everything for a room like this in the United Kingdom. This is a beautiful building. People literally, literally put themselves into the fabric of this building that we are now enjoying. And, and this is our moment. It's like Nehemiah calls again to me and you and he says, come on, who's gonna build with me? Come on now. Now, we're, we're not in the state Jerusalem was in, we, we've got a different context. But the building, the rebuilding, the investing into the future and into the present, putting our mark on this place for the glory of God, not for ourselves, not for our ego, not for our own name, but putting our mark on this place for the glory of God. It's the same call, it's the same call. And Nehemiah is echoing to us, hundreds of years of history have passed, he's come on, who's gonna build with me? Who's gonna build? Who's gonna climb on the wall? Who's gonna pick up a brick? Who's gonna clear the rubble? Who's gonna put their effort or energy, even if required, something of their material wealth into a project that is not just for today, but in thirty years' time? A group of people could be filling this room or another just like it, who will be saying, thank God, thank God, that in two thousand and twenty four, some people built something because they were owners and we are benefiting from it. Amen? Does that make sense to you? Would you stand with me? You've been so patient, so kind, I have run over time, I'm so, so sorry. So let me pray for you. I hope in the context of the two nights, it makes a bit of sense to you. I hope some, some of those beautiful dots have connected. God has called us to be a missional community, a community that looks outward, a community that seeks to bring the shalom of God to Babylon, a community that can only bring the shalom of God to Babylon. That's our call. But not only are we called to be a missional people looking outward, but we're also called to be a people, like we heard last week, a kingdom of priests taking God to the world and a holy nation building a community that looks like the Lord to the world. And I know you know this, but let me remind you, you're in literally a magnificent piece of land, literally. You have in this place a magnificent resource in one of the most strategic nations in the history of the world at this moment. Your nation, where you sit, how you sit, places you as one of the most strategic people on earth. And this beautiful building, sitting in the midst of this strategic nation, is part of that call. And I know when you're thinking about paying your rent or paying your mortgage or just raising your kids, it's hard to see beyond that, I get that. But ladies and gentlemen, this wonderful church is part of a colossally big idea. And your investment here can not only make a difference here, but it can make a difference in this nation. It can make a difference to the world and it can make a difference to the generation that is yet to come. The Psalmist said, one generation will declare your works to another, to a generation not yet born. And if we can hear the call of Nehemiah, if we can hear the wisdom of Jeremiah echoing down centuries of history, then I believe we can be men and women, not only influencing Babylon, but building walls that house a community of worship and word that declares the praise of our God. And so, Lord, I pray for my brothers and sisters in this room tonight. I pray that something of the attitude of ownership will rise up in every one of us. Lord, let us not be distracted by those who can't. Let us not be discouraged by those who won't. But let something of the glorious attitude resident in Nehemiah, resident in Jeremiah, resident in Isaiah, resident, Lord Jesus, even in you. Let this glorious attitude of ownership rise up within us. Lord, we understand that ownership changes everything. And Lord, we understand that owners change things. And Lord, as this wonderful church enters a phase of literally reverbing, rebuilding, but also enters a season, Lord, where heart and vision and values are being reclaimed and rebuilt. Lord, I pray, raise up a generation of owners who will build, who will give, who will invest, who will pour themselves into a moment. And Lord God, who will not only get a benefit today, but Lord, men and women who will build for a greater tomorrow in the kingdom of God. We thank you, Lord, that we are alive for such a time as this. This is our day, this is our time, this is our moment. And Lord, I pray that you will give us the grace to live in it, to live in it well, to live in it generously and to live as owners for the glory of your name. Lord Jesus, we thank you that you owned the world. You owned a broken, sinful, desperately damaged world and you came for every one of us. And we are here today because you, Lord Jesus, are the supreme example of what it means to own people, own a place, own a world and own a cause. And Lord, we pray that something of your spirit will rise up in us so that just like you, Lord, we will live as owners in our world. And so, Lord, I pray you're blessed, my brothers and sisters. Thank you for their attendance in this place. Thank you for the effort and energy they've made to be here tonight. Lord, we pray that as we go, we will go in your grace, we will go in your strength, we will go in your loving kindness, we will go in the power of your spirit and we will go in the truth of your word. And Lord, as we go, may we carry you to the world. So brothers and sisters, may the Lord bless you and may he keep you. May the Lord turn his face towards you and be gracious to you. And may the Lord lift his face towards you and give you his peace. In the name of Jesus, I ask it. Amen, amen.
Amen, amen. All right, we come to the end of the meeting, I believe you're being blessed. But I want to just, before we go, to hear the heartbeat of what I believe the Lord has spoken. And it goes well with what God is calling this church to do and, and there's the community. And, and I, I, I don't think it's a coincidence that we are embarking on the local adoption programme. You know, even before Dr John came, we were already talking, doing that and we're doing prayer walk. And here the heart of God, it is the ownership, all right, the ownership. I belong to the, the early group of people that built, we own this place and we built this, the place with God. And now we want to give the opportunity for the people within this community to know Jesus and for them as well. Amen? God bless you and I'll see you this Sunday.